Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday evening, November 10, 2020. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone who is recording this meeting? If so, please identify yourself by using the raise hand function, or if you are calling in, to please unmute yourself and identify yourself. Okay. I don't see anything. Before the Board begins with this agenda, I just want to make an announcement, which is that an agenda item has been deferred until our meeting next Tuesday, November 17, and that is the discussion of the FY21 Financial Management Plan update. We need some additional time to prepare the information for this presentation. We are hoping that it will be on our agenda for November 17, and that meeting agenda will be posted by this Friday. So we will not be discussing that tonight. People are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. The first order business on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, October 13 and October 20.
I've reviewed both sets of minutes, have submitted my comments, and I'm prepared to move for acceptance.
Okay. Joe, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the minutes dated October 13, 2020.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Bill, would you like to make a motion for the 20th?
I'd like to motion approve the minutes dated October 20, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Okay, the next item of business on the agenda is a traffic committee recommendation for a streetlight on Gardner Street, and I believe that we have Sergeant Kilroy, and I see that he is the co-host, so I am assuming that we may be putting some things up on the screen.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The issue is in the area of 371 Gardner Street. There's an area there that is not very well lit. The road kind of comes to a narrow, enclosed there. And it was brought to our attention about a month ago by a resident who lives on the Rockland end of Gardner Street. Myself, Randy Sylvester, went out there, surveyed the area. I went back after dark several times, also got a good feel for the area, and took some photos, took some video, et cetera, presented that to the Hingham Municipal Light Plant, met with Paul Hennew, who also met with Mike Menton. They went out and took a look at the area, and all agreed that a streetlight would definitely be helpful at that location. We also got some additional signage in that area, and the traffic committee was in agreement that this would be a nice safety addition to that area. So that's how we came to this conclusion this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Sergeant. Joe, questions?
Yeah, just so I make sure I've got this location. This is on the part of Gardner that I think is commonly referred to as Upper Gardner. It's between Route 53 and Route 3. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir. If you're coming from the Dunkin' Donuts lower portion going toward Rockland on Gardner Street, it would be just after Harvest Lane and just before the church at the crest of the hill there.
Ah, okay, okay. And you may have put this in your report. What is... It's two questions, in terms of the traffic count and also the accident rate at that location.
So I didn't do a traffic study per se at that location, just because I know that it is obviously a heavily traveled road and a cut through.
Yeah, it is.
So we knew that any improvement would probably be well-accompanied there. There was not a significant amount of crashes at that location. Most people are able to navigate it. I have had a few. I had a rollover there last year, and another person took out a pole in that area as well. We were good for about one or two crashes there a year. And it is, again, due to some of the narrowing of the roadway, and we do believe that some additional lighting and signage would be helpful.
Yep. No further questions. I mean, I've been on the road, and I think this makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Bill, any questions for Sergeant Kilroy?
Yes, I'm assuming that the neighbors were strongly in favor of this.
So while I was out there, I had spoken to several neighbors who would come out when I've gone back, probably about three times. Obviously, they wondered what I was doing with my flashlight running around up in that corner of the woods there, just trying to get all the different angles down. So people we did speak to were in favor of it. Also, the Hingham Current put out an article that seemed to be well-received as well. And so it does overall seem to be well-received.
Yeah, thank you, Sergeant. I know that there was a lot of correspondence, and I appreciate Mr. McHugh bringing this to the town's attention. I actually drove down to Gardner Street to see the proposed location. It all makes sense to me, and I appreciate the traffic committee being responsive to the residents' request. Prior to the Board taking a vote, is there anyone who has a question or wishes to make a comment on the traffic committee recommendation for a streetlight on Gardner Street?
Mary, this is Tom. I just wanted to thank Sergeant Kilroy for his dedication in standing out at this very dark corner for tonight's meeting. I thought that was very well thought through.
Okay. Bill or Joe, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll move to approve the request of the traffic committee for the installation of a streetlight on pole number 53 in the area of 371 Gardner Street.
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary, aye. Sergeant Kilroy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm just going to make an announcement that I made at the beginning of the meeting before we go on to the next item of business on the agenda. The agenda item of the FY21 Financial Management Plan update has been deferred until our meeting next week. The town needs some additional time to prepare the information. The next item of business on the agenda is the discussion of proposed MBTA, Hingham Ferry, and Green Bush commuter rail service cuts. Joe, I'm going to turn this over to you. I know that... We're all aware that in the last day or so, the town and the South Shore has received the news of some of the MBTA recommendations.
Yeah, so...
But I'll turn it over to you to provide an update.
I think I should have followed the sergeant's example and had been at the ferry terminal to give my report, so that we'd have a live-action shot. So the MBTA Fiscal and Management Control Board met on November 9, and they made preliminary but are pretty close to final decisions with respect to train, bus, and ferry service affecting Hingham. So the relatively good news is that the Green Bush train service is not scheduled to be eliminated. There will be changes to the service. During the week, trains will run until 9:00 PM rather than the later schedules that are followed now. The frequency of trains will be reduced by about 20%, and weekend service, Saturday and Sunday service, will be eliminated. So that's what's scheduled for the Green Bush trains, and that's consistent with how the MBT will be handling the other commuter rails as well. With respect to bus service, the bus route 2020, which goes from Hingham to Quincy Center, that has been classified by the MBTA as a non-essential bus route, but it will be maintained. They're expecting, though, to reduce the frequency of those buses by about 20%. There's another bus, which is Route 714, that runs from Hingham all the way out to Pemberton Point in Hull, and obviously the other way, and the MBT is planning to eliminate that bus route in its entirety. That's bus route 714. With respect to the ferry service, there are two lines of the ferry. One that goes directly from Hingham to Rose Wharf, and then there's the second, the Hingham-Hull ferry goes to Hull, then goes to Long Wharf. Service on both of those lines are scheduled to be terminated, eliminated 100% with the suggestion that in the future it could be resumed if ridership warrants. It's not clear how they'll determine if ridership warrants, if there's no opportunity for people to ride it at all. So what's next? There are four meetings coming up on four different dates that I want to bring to your attention. There is a meeting on November 19 at 6:00 PM, and that is the MBTA, they call it the "Forging Ahead" meeting. It's a system-wide meeting, a public meeting. There's a second meeting on November 23 at 6:00 PM with the MBTA, and that focuses specifically on South Shore issues. There's a third meeting on December 2 at 6:00 PM, and that is another system-wide discussion. All of that is leading up to the fourth meeting on December 7 at noon, where there would be the final vote of the Fiscal and Management Control Board on the proposed service cuts. So there's four meetings. We can post on the town website links for those meetings. I would encourage members of the public to register for each of those meetings and indicate their interest in attending, so they can support the ferry service and to make sure that there's no further cuts on Green Bush, and in fact, to try to increase the service beyond what is currently being proposed. So that is what's happening with respect to the MBTA right now.
Okay, thank you. Tom, perhaps you could also just add a press release or a letter came out from yourself and your counterparts. Maybe you could just describe some of the efforts that you and our neighboring communities are undertaking as well.
Sure, thank you, Mary. Through the Town of Cohasset's work, the towns of Situate, Hingham, Hull, and Cohasset have jointly engaged a firm to help us keep the public informed of our efforts to try to keep these vital transit options available to the people of the South Shore. So to that end, a memo was issued yesterday, last night, that spoke to our great disappointment in the decisions of the MBTA yesterday.
Okay. Bill, any questions for either Joe or for Tom?
Joe, if you know Joe, so the meetings on the 19th, 23rd, 2nd, do they take public comment at these meetings?
So they will not take public comments at the meeting. They allow for the public to submit comments in advance of those meetings. And so when you register, that process will be identified. But it's real important that we get those comments in, that there's a vocal support, an active support for public transit on the South Shore.
I know a lot of people have been sending comments in, and I would encourage people to continue to do so. So thank you.
I should have noted that today at 1:45, there was a group organized by the Hull "Save the Ferry" folks. They met at the shipyard in Hingham with signs. They were out there. There was some news media, all highlighting the importance of the Hingham-Hull ferry service.
And Joe, in terms of, you know, over the past few weeks, Representative Moschino has identified some of the other sources, savetheferry.org, some of the resources on her website. My understanding is that, again, those are still helpful places for individuals to provide feedback, to continue to provide information as to how they use these services.
Yes, and we have on our website a link to all of those sites. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to ask a question or make a comment with respect to the proposed MBTA, Hingham Ferry, and Green Bush commuter line service cuts? I recognize Martha Buick. Martha, if you could please give your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Martha Buick, 34 Otis Hill Road. I have two general thoughts and sort of recommendations based on the outcome of the MBTA meeting. First of all, I think I would like to review the MBTA presentations and conclusions, because I think that there are errors in the figures, both in ridership and financial, and those used to make the case that the MBTA is going to become more balanced in fiscal year '22. So that's one thought, that I think it was evident at the meeting that there's not been much attention paid. I think that there was an assumption that everybody down here is well-to-do. The statistical analyst acknowledged that she hadn't actually figured out who rode the ferry, so they have no idea. So I think that we can try to work to make a better case, and that's one thing I'm concerned about. The second one is that I think we have to make a case for the ferries providing core essential services. Now, that's the terminology that the MBTA uses. Our problem is that right now, the ferries sound too nice. It's almost as though they're frivolous, and yet we know how important they are. I think the problem is that the T is using only what they call transit-sensitive population, which is, you know, the low-income minority, seniors is one, but they only use transit-sensitive. But they haven't... But I think that what they should do is look at the argument that the ferries and rail are an integral part of the regional transportation system. If the ferries are gone and life returns as we know it, the road congestion on Route 3A and 93 would return to what they call Level of Service F, which is basically stop and go. And that's why the towns of, including Hingham in '74 and '75, and the Chamber of Commerce started this 45 years ago. It was the initiative of the towns, because there was no other solution then. And I think in a way, that's perhaps one of the reasons that the T has always had a weird relationship with the ferries. It's not one of the union systems. It's something that's nice, and it's something that they sort of have paid short shrift to in many ways, even though they run a wonderful service. So one is, I think we have to make a core essential argument for the need to have, to keep the ferries as part of the regional transportation mix. Otherwise, we head back to Service F. Again, the problem is that the T is not relating to road issues. This is all looking at the MBTA only. It has no overview of the impacts once the ridership goes back onto the highways again. So that's one thing. The second is, what is the responsibility of the MBTA to provide or continue transit service when $600 million is invested in a transit-oriented development? To me, I think it's shocking that the MBTA promotes and welcomes TODs, but they haven't even acknowledged the level of private investment in what's been happening at the shipyard, that there's a new community of 1,500 people. I don't know if it's an oversight, but there's something very wrong about pulling up, you know, inviting people to come to build around a transit station, but then pulling the transit station away. And I just wonder if there's sort of a, any sort of legal implications that come from that, or any burden of responsibility, and that's something I'd like us to look into. And then finally, although I suppose this is more frivolous, the T has purchased four ferries, the two former airport ferries and two sister vessels, and I wondered if they'd consider selling those to another operator as one way of making their budget whole. So those are my thoughts for tonight. Thank you.
Martha, thank you, and thank you for your continued engagement and advocacy, not just with us, but with the MBTA, and thank you for helping to facilitate the letter that the Board, and more importantly, the MBTA, received from Samuels and Associates with respect to some of the shipyard development. Martha, I think you're muted.
You did receive a letter from Samuels?
We did, we did. And more importantly, on Friday, it was also received by the MBTA.
Excellent.
So that letter was out there.
I'd love to see a copy, if that's possible.
We'd be glad to send one to you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to ask a question or make a comment with respect to the MBTA and the service reductions? Ms. Ahoro, I see that your hand is up. Did you have a question or wish to make a comment about the MBTA service? Okay. I guess not. Okay. Joe, you will continue to keep us updated on any other developments that come to pass on this. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the COVID-19 update. Tom?
Thank you, Mary. So as of today, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health is reporting 169,976 total confirmed COVID-19 cases in Massachusetts, of which 12,372 are in Plymouth County. Confirmed cases have been steadily rising in Massachusetts since September. After three consecutive weeks in the state's red COVID-19 category, Hingham moved back to the green category as of Friday, with 424 total cases and an average daily incidence rate of 7.7 per 100,000 people over the prior 14 days. The state revised its COVID-19 metrics to account for population size and positivity rate in determining how a community moves between the different color designations. That's also new. Under the current state guidance, Hingham remains in Phase 3 Step 1 of the Governor's reopening plan. We need three consecutive weeks in a non-red category to be considered lower risk and subsequently moved to Phase 3 Step 2. So this week, our health department will roll out a new COVID-19 dashboard that you can find on the town's COVID-19 Update Center website. The dashboard consolidates state and Hingham public school data into one visual that we will update each Friday. Last Friday, November 6, several new COVID-19 measures announced by the Governor went into effect. These measures include a revised stay-at-home advisory instructing residents to stay home between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM except for work, school, and essential needs, a new executive order that requires the early closure of certain businesses and activities each night at 9:30 PM, an updated face coverings order requiring all persons over age 5 to wear face coverings in all public places, even when more than six feet apart, and an updated order restricting gathering size to 10 people for indoor gatherings at private residences and 25 people for outdoor gatherings at private residences, and requiring that they end by 9:30 PM. More details can be found on the Department of Public Health's website and the town's COVID-19 Update Center website. Our office has received several questions about the possibility of holding special town meeting, given the state's new COVID-19 restrictions. As they did in the spring, the Governor's most recent COVID-19 orders provide an exception for municipal legislative bodies, which means that special town meeting will still take place on Saturday, November 21, outdoors at the Hingham High School multipurpose field. Like we did at the annual town meeting in June, we will be taking as many COVID-19 precautions as possible at the November special town meeting. These include holding the meeting outdoors, spacing chairs 10 feet apart, requiring masks and social distancing, having hand sanitizer stations available throughout the venue, and cleaning microphones after each use. That's all, Mary.
Thank you. Michelle, did you have anything this evening on the COVID-19 update?
Not tonight. Thanks, Mary.
Okay. Bill or Joe, any questions for Tom?
No, just kudos to our executive health officer for just staying on top of all this and managing the many issues that the town is facing. So thank you, Susan Sarni.
Bill? Okay. Does anyone in the public wish to ask a question or make a comment relative to the COVID-19 update? Okay, seeing none, we have a couple of possible votes, and I believe that DPW Superintendent Randy Sylvester is on the line. Tom, did you or Michelle want to walk the Board through these votes, or will we have Randy do that?
Randy's going to walk us through it. It's a vote for a truck and for an ice belt contract.
Okay, Randy, welcome.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay. So the first one, you have for a 1-ton Chevrolet 3500, regular cab with a dump body, which is used by the DPW in the Highway Division for a variety of tasks. These tasks include hauling trailers and mowers, storm debris pickup, material hauling, trash pickup from town facilities, snow plowing, and whatever else is needed at the time. This vehicle has over 100,000 miles. The repairs on it to date are over $9,000, and we're in need of this vehicle.
Okay. And Randy, my understanding is that this is going to be needed for the winter, and therefore we have to order it now so that it can be put into service when it will be needed?
Absolutely. We would like to have it before the snow starts flying, and it will have a sander onboard, so it will be fully functioning. I would like to have it fully functioning before the snow starts flying.
Yeah. Well, and unfortunately, the snow has already started flying, but hopefully before it flies the next time. Joe or Bill, any questions for Randy?
Randy, so you mentioned that you described a truck with 100,000 miles. That's the old truck, not the one that's being purchased. Is that correct?
No, this is the one that... Yeah, this is the old truck, yes.
Right.
Yes, it's 2011.
Right. So what's being purchased is a 2021?
Yes, it is.
Right. And that's being purchased new?
Yes.
And I understand it comes with a plow as well?
It comes with a plow and a sander.
Yep. I mean, I've reviewed the contract, and I think everything is in order, and I do not want the town to be ill-equipped when the weather requires these services. So thank you. No further questions.
Bill?
Randy, just out of curiosity, how many years or miles do we get out of these cool used vehicles?
Well, these vehicles, it varies. These vehicles are basically on a time schedule, and this is every 10 years. And right about now, it's about 100,000 miles. So that's about our average. When they're deferred, it can get up to 130,000 miles and plus.
It sounds like the vehicle's used all year long. Obviously, snow removal, but summertime use, and obviously in the fall, spring seasons also, correct? Obviously, snow removal, but summertime use, and obviously in the fall, spring seasons also, correct?
Correct. This is a, this, this truck is used daily for, for a variety of functions, which I described.
Thanks, Randy.
Randy, one other question. How, how is the current truck going to be disposed of, is, if it is going to be disposed of?
That will be a trade-in.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Um, I see, uh, I see a, a hand has been raised. I recognize Libby Claypool. Libby, if you could please give your um, your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi. I'm, am I unmuted? Yeah. Um, this is uh, Libby Claypool from Capital Outlay, uh, 25 Mann Street. And um, hi, Randy. Uh, will the chair recognize me to just ask a question directly to Randy?
Uh, Libby, if you could please direct it to me, and then I'll ask Randy to answer it, just, you know, if, if we could?
Sure. Um, so I guess what I'm wondering is DPW, by the way, does a wonderful job of prioritizing their vehicles, and um, uh, and I'm just curious, though, is this a vehicle that was not on the fiscal '21 replacement plan? And if so, was it possibly a uh, purchase that we deferred through Capital Outlay?
No, it was on the plan. It, it's on the plan to be purchased. And that's how I put it in. That's what I got back from Capital Outlay, is that, that schedule. It is on the schedule to be purchased in this year.
Okay. So I guess I'm curious why it has to be separately approved if it's already on their plan? And it, is it because of the COVID restrictions on capital, Mary?
It, it's actually, Libby, because of the amount. It's um, because of the amount of the price of 73,000. That, uh, that requires Board of Selectment approval. So with many of our capital projects, while they've been approved by Capital Outlay, um, we, we have um, uh, Tom's, Tom's signing authority as, was it a Tom 50, 50,000? Yeah. So, Libby, one of the questions that we ask when, when any of these projects come before us, one of the first questions we ask is uh, whether uh, whether that has been approved by the Capital Outlay Committee. And the other question we always ask is if the um, if the purchase price is also consistent with the dollar amount approved by Capital Outlay.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was something that was on our plan, and that we didn't miss anything, and um, for DPW. So, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, Bill or Joe, would someone like to make a motion?
I can pull up the vote.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Liberty Chevrolet Incorporated for a 2021 Chevrolet 3500 regular cab in chassis, four-by-four Silverado pickup truck, with plow for a total delivered price of 73,868 dollars.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, and uh, Randy, you also have a contract with Eastern Minerals. This looks like it's um, it's uh, salt for the roads?
Yes. On a yearly basis, the town of Medfield uh, puts out a consortium bid for the salt um, for the road. Um, this is for basically sol, solar salt, or regular salt. Um, and they do it for our consortium, and um, it is for the amount of 300, I think it's around 302,000 dollars, which equates to about 7,000 tons of salt. Now, that's a little bit more than what we average, u, use, use average, but I want to be equipped and be prepared if we get a, a winter where we're gonna need it. We don't have to pay for it unless we order it. It's only on an as-ordered basis. And what it is, it's at a, at a rate of $43.18 a ton. So that equates to 302,260 dollars.
Yeah. Randy, um, how full is the shed right now?
It is a little bit over half, half full.
I, I know you like to go into the season with it fairly full, so that if during the year there are supply issues, um, we are, we are in a good position.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We will fill it before the, before the snow flies. Again.
Joe, any questions for Randy?
Uh, yeah, Randy, so as I understand it, this is basically, we're, the town is participating in this collective procurement along with 29 municipalities. Um, and so we're getting the benefit of that joint purchase. Uh, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And how is the per, how does the per-ton price this year compare to prior year's pricing?
Well, I did, I did a little analysis, and the price has come, come down every year since 2016. Last year, the price was 46.95, and this year it's down to 43.18. So it, I think the lack of use of salt has brought the price down from last year.
Great. No other questions. Thank you for uh, keeping the town prepared.
Bill?
Question. Uh, how well does the salt keep, the unused salt keep from sea, uh, year to year? Like, obviously, last year we had a, um, um, a winter with less snow. You know, winters past, we've had blizzard, you know, after blizzard, after blizzard. So when, when you do have excess supply, um, does, does the salt keep well to be reused in the um, the next winter?
Absolutely. Um, the town purchased a, a salt shed in 2010 when the building um, was built, and it holds about 7,000 tons. Um, no, I'm sorry, maybe a little less than that. Um, and we try to fill it at the beginning of the year, and we will get deliveries periodically. Uh, so we'll, we're never, we'd like to be half-full at all times, if possible. Going into storms, we want to be at least half-full, and in the beginning, we want to be at least three-quarters, if not full. But it does last from year to year.
All right. Thanks, Randy.
Is there anyone in the public who has a question or comment about this agreement for uh, with Eastern Minerals, Inc. to supply the town with rock salt? Okay, uh, seeing none, I'd accept a motion.
I move to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Eastern Minerals, Inc. to supply the town with CC rock salt or solar salt at a rate of $43.18 per ton, delivered not to exceed 3,000, 302,260 dollars in total.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Randy, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item of business on the agenda is public comment. The Board of Selectmen encourages community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes for public comment on items that fall under the purview of the Board of Selectmen and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please seek to be recognized by using the raise hand function. Once recognized, state your name and address, and please address your comments to the chair. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of responsibility of the Board of Selectmen. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and not to indulge in personalities. The public comment period is not a time for debate by the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen neither is adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment? Uh, I recognize Ms. O'Hora. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Suzy O'Horo, Seven Wander Strive in Hingham. Um, as you know, um, there's a, uh, I'm working with a group of people in town, um, the supporters of the Hingham Public Schools, who've circulated a petition supporting the Hingham Public Schools. And I think many of the people on the call tonight were really looking forward to a discussion of the, you know, operational budget for the Hingham Public Schools. So I'm, I have two questions. One is, I know procedurally, the town is required to submit an agenda, I believe, 48 hours in advance. Um, is there a similar procedural rule about agenda changes um, for eliminating those uh, agenda items? Because certainly, you know, many of us had other things to do at this point, and we're looking forward to the discussion. And then, second of all, I know there's a lot of members of the school committee on the call tonight, um, and between the Board of Selectmen and the school committee members. If someone could please elaborate as to why this agenda change occurred would be helpful for a lot of the parents, I think, on the, on the call. Uh, because again, most of us are really, you know, strong advocates for increasing the operational budgets for the schools, as well as, um, you know, not just a discussion about Foster.
Mm-hmm. Um, so, um, Ms. O'Hora, thank you, and I'm, I'm gonna just, I'm just writing down to make sure that I've, I've addressed things. Um, first of all, our apologies to uh, to those who uh, arranged their schedule to participate in this meeting, uh, looking for a, an agenda item. Uh, open meeting law does, um, boards and committees in Massachusetts are able to remove items from agenda, from agendas, uh, without 48 hours' worth of notice. Um, that is, um, that is something that's allowed under, under the open meeting law. Um, as I said at the start of the meeting, um, uh, this afternoon, in consultation with the Chair of the Advisory Committee, uh, we determined that we needed additional time to prepare the information that was needed for the discussion. And I would just clarify, the purpose of the discussion tonight was not a review of the operational budget for the Hingham Public Schools. It was originally intended to be the FY '21 Financial Management Plan update. Um, at this past year's town meeting, uh, the, it's contained in the warrant, but there was a financial management plan that was adopted by the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, and the School Committee, uh, that basically said how we were going to try to manage our finances this year, given all the uncertainty of COVID. And one of the things the plan calls for is a quarterly review of looking back to say, how did we do in the first quarter? How did we do in the quarter preceding? And what's coming ahead? And that was, that is the purpose of the FY '21 Financial Management Plan update. Um, I'm, I'm gonna kind of leave it at that because, because this isn't a posted agenda item. Um, I want to be careful not to uh, engage too much in a way where we begin discussing something that wasn't on the agenda. Um, but I, I hope that that answers the questions, and again, our apologies for, um, our apologies to those who were uh, joining expecting to engage in a discussion that we will now be having next week. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment? Okay, uh, seeing none, uh, appointments. Uh, I believe this evening, we have um, received some additional information that would allow us to make, uh, I believe it's two additional appointments to the Commission on Disabilities. Um, Bill, I believe that maybe you would like to make a motion?
Motion that, um, that we appoint, uh, Megan Baker and Maria O'Laughlin to the Commission on Disabilities for, um, I believe it is a
Uh, so Bill, I
For a one-year term? No, sorry, for one
I think you may need to make two separate motions, because as we're staffing the commission, um, we're staggering the appointment terms so that we have continuity.
Okay. The, the vote list hasn't, but I, I can put them up. So I'd make a motion to um, appoint Maria O'Laughlin to the at-large seats to the Commission on Disabilities for a one-year term ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Okay. And uh, Bill, did you want to make a second motion?
Sure. I'd make a motion to appoint Megan Baker to the Commission on Disabilities for a two-year term ending June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Uh, that's, uh, that's excellent. Thank you. Uh, next we have, uh, Selectmen and Town Administrator Reports. Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
Not tonight, Mary, thank you.
Okay. Joe?
Uh, nothing further this evening. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, the only thing um, I have is, um, as we do every year, we have a tradition of celebrating our Veterans Day ceremony um, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And that will be tomorrow at 11 o'clock. And it's gonna be virtually this year, uh, given the pandemic. But I would encourage everybody to um, to watch the ceremony. We have a wonderful speaker this year. Um, and it's, it's always a well, well, well-done event led by our Veteran Service Officer, Keith German, and um, it's gonna be at Harbor Media tomorrow at 11 o'clock, and it starts right at 11, and um, I would encourage everybody to, to watch it and to uh, enjoy, enjoy the day.
Um, thank you, Bill. I'm so glad you mentioned that. Um, I have a couple of updates. Um, last week, on Thursday, Bill and I had the pleasure of uh, attending Phyllis Chapman's 103rd birthday party. And this was put together, there is a, a group of seniors who participate in an exercise program through the Senior Center. And it's a group of probably about 40 women who have come to uh, develop friendships and support each other in many different ways, and uh, Phyllis Chapman is an inspiration and a leader in this group, and um, the board has been lucky enough to be invited to her birthday party every year for the last four years. And with COVID, uh, we basically had a, a, a sort of a walk-by um, Station 27 on Station Street. Phyllis was getting her hair done when 40 people began walking by with signs and balloons and cards and all kinds of things. And um, you know, as much as it lifted Phyllis up, I think all of us who were there were just also lifted up and reminded of the great sense of community and the friendships that come from um, people engaging in their community. So it was terrific, and uh, we extend our best wishes to Phyllis. Um, I also just wanted to thank uh, James Marathas, who is the head of the Hingham Housing Authority. He was able to secure um, a very large number of masks uh, for housing authorities, and was generous enough to offer some of those masks uh, to the town um, for our public safety officials and for our employees. And uh, we just want to say thank you to him. And then, uh, lastly, uh, over the weekend, uh, I received notification that um, uh, the MSBA had sent a letter asking the town to certify the enrollment and design certification for Foster School. And this is another important milestone uh, in the very important work we're doing towards Foster School. And uh, basically, what this is doing is the MSBA has set an enrollment figure for the school. That will be the basis for sizing the school, determining the number of classrooms, determining the size of things. And um, a, and while in some ways it's procedural, I think, again, it's an important milestone as we continue to work with our colleagues in the school department um, towards the replacement of Foster School. Uh, so with that, I think, Tom, did I get all the votes and everything? I think everything's concluded.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
Our, our next meeting is scheduled for uh, Tuesday, November 17th. Our agenda will be posted by Friday. To the extent our meeting date changes, that will be posted, you know, 48 hours in advance, but that is our plan right now. Uh, and with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill? I think Bill's muted, but I, I saw, I saw his mouth moving. There you go. Mary?
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.